Everybody please rise. Okay, I'm gonna do the invocation and uh. Hi, Dr. Bill, the operation manager director is going to do the pledge allegiance. Please bow your heads. Uh, Father God, thank you for being with us tonight. And we ask that you please guide us in our decisions making for our citizens. Those here are ones of Baptists, voters we work for. Just pray the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Good job, we say it, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Thank you everybody for being here. Uh, I've been advised. I think Councilman Bird and I both have advised that we're not speaking loud enough into our phones. Only one councilman speaks loud enough all the time.
I just project, Mayor, I talk for everybody.
Well, I understand what he's saying because I was taught the military how to project, you know. You project your voice out there, but I guess I'm supposed to do the job of it. And I apologize if people don't hear me very well. But I'll try to keep my voice out.
I would probably let the microphone do the work.
There we go. But welcome everybody and glad to everybody to have everybody here and people on uh internet also. Okay. First item we have here is public comments. And we have no public comment scheduled, so pass on the whole business. And there's no little business. Uh, new business, we got item number one is gonna be fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget presentation. And uh, City Council Harrison will do that, please.
As Mayor already said, uh, we're going to do a presentation on fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, first slide, just wanna say thank you, Mayor, and also Councilman Omeo, I know he's not here tonight, but thank you for sitting on the Budget Committee this year, I appreciate that. Uh, first slide is just again an overview of our fund structure for the city. Uh, the governmental funds is our general fund. Uh, special revenue funds is confiscated asset fund, our chip grant and our ARPA fund. Capital projects is our local maintenance improvement grant fund, which is where we resurface our streets. The SPOST eighteen fund as well. Uh, enterprise funds, water and sewer sanitation, uh, stormwater utility. And then our fiduciary fund is a custodial fund, which is the municipal court. Not, not much change there, that's pretty standard. Uh, the fiscal uh year twenty twenty-four budget uh includes seventy-three full-time positions, twenty-one part-time positions and five members of the governing authority. Of the seventy-three full-time and twenty-one part-time positions, fifty-five and a half full-time and eighteen part-time are in the general fund. And seventeen and a half full-time and three part-time are in the unified fund. Um, this year we do have five part-time employees under elections. Uh, and we will be uh adding two positions in the fire department and one part-time position in our sanitation fund. Uh, next slide is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed general fund revenues, which totaled four million eight hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and five dollars. That includes uh property taxes of two point four million, motor vehicle and T A B tax of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, mobile home tax of twenty-three thousand, intangible tax forty-five thousand, real estate transfer tax of twenty-four thousand, franchise tax of five hundred and thirteen thousand, alcohol taxes eighty-six thousand, insurance premium tax six hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh penalties, interest and vicus of thirteen thousand dollars, licenses and permits a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, fines and forfeitures five hundred and twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand, uh interest revenue forty-two thousand and miscellaneous of twenty-five thousand eight fifty. Next slide uh looks at all the other revenues other than the general fund revenues. And that total is seven million nine hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Forty-three point five or three million four forty-eight seven twenty-four are the other governmental fund revenues, which consists of the chip grant, the ARPA, the LMEG and the SPOST. The other fifty-six point five percent or four million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars consists of uh the water and sewer fund of two point five million, stormwater two hundred and seventy-one thousand and sanitation fund of one point six million. Uh, the fiscal year twenty-four total budgeted city expenditures is uh four million nine hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars. That consists of uh five general fund of five point nine million, confiscated asset fund of one thousand, chip grant of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, uh LMEG grant of ninety-six thousand seven ninety-nine, SPOST capital project fund of six hundred and fifty-one thousand five sixty-two, uh water and sewer of six point one million, stormwater utility of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand and sanitation fund of one point three million. I did wanna note that the fiscal year twenty twenty-four total budget of fourteen million nine ninety-two ninety-three is actually about one percent or thirty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars less than the forecasted amended fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget of fifteen million twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Uh, both the fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four budget includes the capital project fund of three and a half million, which is uh in the water and sewer fund and that will be for construction of the sanitary sewer line. We had initially budgeted in this fiscal year. Um, it's kind of made to the point we'll put it out to bid, so that's kind of where we'll take fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Alright, uh, the next slide is a pie chart of the total budget expenditures of fourteen million nine ninety-two ninety-three. Uh, it'll kind of just kind of give us a percentage of how much um in each fund. Uh, as I said, the general fund is five point nine million or forty percent of the total budget. Our special revenue funds uh for chip is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And that also includes the uh confiscated funds. The SPOST is four point five eight percent or six hundred and eighty-six thousand. The LMEG is ninety-six thousand seven ninety-nine or less than one percent. Water and sewer is six point one million or forty point eight percent. Stormwater is five hundred and seventy-eight thousand or three point eight six percent. And sanitation is uh one point three million or eight point seven percent of the total budget. Uh, next we'll look a little bit closer at the general fund, just because the general fund is the major fund of the city and contains operations of uh fourteen different departments there. Um, legislative budget is gonna be a hundred and thirty-six thousand, elections is twenty-five thousand, financial administration is four hundred and ninety-five thousand, legal is two hundred and sixteen thousand, information systems a hundred and nineteen thousand, municipal court is one ninety-seven, police department is two point one eight four million, probation office is seventy-four thousand four hundred, fire department is one point seven million, animal control is eighty-three thousand, street department is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, park is two hundred and five thousand, building inspections fifty-nine thousand and economic development is a hundred and six thousand for total uh budget for general fund of five million nine ninety-seven three ninety-four. Um, and on another note, that general fund budget is about seven percent more than what our amended general fund budget will be for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Uh, the next slide is a pie chart, pie, pie chart again of the general fund, but um this is by function. Uh, so public safety uh is four million dollars and that's about sixty-eight percent of the general fund budget. That does include police, fire, uh probation and animal control. Uh, if we wanna, police and fire is about sixty-five percent if we wanted to get into more specifics there. Uh, the judicial is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand or three percent. General government is nine hundred and ninety-three thousand or seventeen percent. And the general government is the legislative, the elections, the finance, the legal, the information systems. Uh, housing and development is three percent or a hundred and sixty-five thousand. That's economic development and um building inspection. Parks and recreation is two hundred and five thousand or three percent and public parks is three hundred and sixty-five thousand or six percent. Okay, one, one more revisit to the general fund expenditures and this now just breaks out the expenses by operating and capital outlay. Uh, operating expenses include salaries and wages of three million ninety-six thousand uh or fifty-two percent, employee benefits are a million seventy thousand or eighteen percent. Professional tech and technical services is a hundred and twenty-two thousand and two percent. Purchased property services is three hundred and forty thousand and six percent. Other purchase services is four hundred and eighty-one thousand or eight percent. Supplies and utilities is five hundred and sixty-four thousand or nine percent. Capital outlay is a hundred and seventy-five thousand or three percent and intergovernmental is a hundred and forty-eight thousand or two percent. Okay, the next slide uh looks at the enterprise expenses and we're looking here uh based on operating and capital as well. The total enterprise expenses for water and sewer sanitation and stormwater is eight million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, four point two million is operating and three point seven four cents is capital expenses. Uh, operating expenses and we'll start with salaries are eight hundred and fifty-two thousand or eleven percent. Deploy benefits are three hundred and thirty-six thousand or four percent. Professional and tech services are eighty-three thousand or one percent. Capital is three point seven four six million or forty-seven percent of the total budget. Uh, purchased property services is a million five twenty-one through sixteen or nineteen percent. Other purchase services is a hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and six percent. Supplies and utilities is three hundred fifty-one thousand four percent. And intergovernmental is a hundred and eight thousand five hundred or ten percent. And then other costs is about two percent and a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh, this is just summarizes the total budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Forecast budget revenues is twelve million seven hundred and ninety-one thousand seventy-two dollars. Other financing sources are gonna be appropriation of general fund balance of two hundred and one thousand, appropriation of special revenue fund of a thousand, appropriation enterprise net position is six hundred and fifty-one thousand five seventy-four and loan proceeds from our G balloon of one point five million, of which gives us our total proposed revenue and other financing sources of fifteen million one hundred and forty-four thousand. Uh, the total proposed expenditures consist of general fund of five point nine million, uh special revenue and capital project expenditures of nine hundred and one thousand and enterprise money expenses of eight, eight million eleven thousand five thirty-eight. For total proposed expenditures and expenses, fourteen million nine hundred and ninety thousand two ninety-three. The increase of the balance is really specific to the SPOST fund since we will have a little bit more revenue ex SPOST fund than the total expenses. Um, and so the increase in overall is a hundred and fifty-four thousand six thirty-nine of revenues over expenses in total. And that is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget presentation.
Really digs down to it, doesn't it? Did a great job on that, I appreciate it. Does anybody have any comments or thoughts or?
Might need to add some money to pie chart budget for next year. Then we spend all of it, that, that this year's budget, we sure did that before the whole.
Any questions that I could ask, I could probably do that.
Anybody have any questions? I hear none, again, I thank you for that. Okay, we move to item number two, which is the uh, yeah, a resolution for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Can Ms. Harrison uh, I guess we, I go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt it.
So, Ms. Mayor, I move that we adopt the FY twenty-four budget.
I have a motion, I have a second. Second. Okay. Do you have some discussion or uh? No, here discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Three to one. It's approved. Thank you very much, very good job.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Okay, number three is approval for the engagement letter for professional audit services. Uh, fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Councilman Wright and City Council Harrison on that, please.
Yeah, I see, well, I have the letter in my packet, but this is the engagement letter that we used, it's the same verb that we used last year.
That's correct.
Okay. So this is Mayor has a copy of the letter?
Yes.
So Mayor, I mean, we adopt that engagement letter, they're gonna allow you to sign it. All right, you decide it, actually.
I'll second that one.
Motion and second, we have any discussion on it?
Um, just a quick question, A, there was some, I think there was some discussion about changing audit services every so often, is that?
We did that last year.
Usually uh every five years, uh just so that there's a new set of eyes um on, on the financial statements and on the records. Um, the way Malden and Jenkins addresses is that they, I mean, we could go to a whole different perm every five years if we want to, but I know that they rotate audit partners as well and that kind of gets.
I just wanted to refresh from any.
Sure, this is the third year that I'll bring, gonna be audited.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, that was a great question. Okay, you in for a discussion? All in favor, favor, I mean, we have a motion, we have a second, so all in favor of the uh engagement letter for professional audit services, my signature, say aye.
Aye.
All, all same sign. Ladies and gentlemen. Number four is approval for job description, part-time recycle center personnel, Councilman Bird and Director of Operations, Dr. Bill, please.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Mayor, in your package, you should have a copy of the vote, job description for the new positions that we funded in this year's budget at the recycle center, that job title is a recycle center worker. Uh, Ms. Tidings and Ms. Bede, feel, put together this job description and it's here for your approval tonight. I can read all the things you want me to, but I don't see no reason.
All they're necessary. They have a motion to approve it.
I, I need to be approved the job description for the part-time, it's a second.
Have motion and a second, any discussion?
So, so Drake, you've already, already worked out the details on when you do a plan on having them work?
Yes, sir, it's effective July first.
Okay. It's part-time, so is it gonna be weekends or?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, starting July the first, we intend to go back to three days a week at the recycle center and there'll be uh three different part-time employees that'll fill the positions for those three days.
Very good, very good.
Uh, still we uh requesting volunteers in addition to that, or is that, does that cover the entire?
Some of them are gonna stay with us. We still have some volunteers.
Somebody has everyone else. I, I mean, not saying that we didn't need, need the entire, I'm just curious as to whether that, you met the minimum staffing required to run.
Yeah, that was the problem, I mean, that the, having enough people to be able to count on, to have, just go back to three days and, and carry on the day we weren't that open.
I believe we're going back three days, back to July first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no further discussion? Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all same sign? Approved and had this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good job, thank you. And uh. Thank uh, former council, I call Councilman Wright out there too, for everything he does. He's been a big part of it, and I should have recognized it beginning, uh, Councilman Wright, I apologize for that. I had a motive to do it, but I didn't do it, no excuse. Alright, number five here's a public hearing, the proposed adoption ordinance, Newtown Centurion District. Councilman Wright and Director of Economic Development, Shannon Brown.
Thank you, Bear, we're, we're excited about this one, I'm gonna ask uh Director Bryant here to step to the mic and introduce this uh update. For this is something we've been working on for quite a while and we're glad to see it uh finally get going here. It's been, I know it's been a, a luxurious project to get this done with all the various agencies and uh different entities we had to get together to make this happen. So Shannon, give us the rundown on this report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council, uh, so Planning and zoning didn't meet last Thursday for their public meeting. Uh, we did not have anyone come to the public meeting except for me, who didn't answer a lot of questions uh and had a lot of discussion with Planning and zoning. And I do wanna take this moment to thank them publicly for the work that they do because they've put a lot of time and effort into this as well and I feel like they kind of fly under the radar a lot. So I wanna thank them for their work and, and helping to get this through as well. Um, and if it's, if now is the appropriate time, I will call Mr. Randall Wright, who is a representative of Planning and zoning as well, uh, to give their recommendations from that board.
Well, as she said, we didn't meet last Thursday evening, all members were present. We listened, we discussed and took a vote and it was unanimous to move forward with what the city is proposing.
Anybody have any questions for, Mr. Wright? Thank you for your service, though, we appreciate it, you're a team. Yep, okay, at this point, I'm gonna go to a public hearing. Yep, and uh, be brief because I don't really see anybody out here resisting the same. Okay. I've seen anybody back in council meeting. Okay, at this point, I entertain a motion uh for the adoption of the ordinance, Newtown Centurion District.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Now a second, now a second. Any further discussion?
So what point out, the adoption of this zoning district and it is included in the ordinance that the moratorium on building permits um ends as of with the adoption of this one?
And I do wanna say, I like, uh, Councilman Wright, and I do appreciate all your efforts for everyone that was involved in this, uh, something that we've been wanting to do for a long time. And uh, looking, looking at the process and, you know, we were talking about the overlays and all those things and by doing this, we get rid of a lot of the red tape that um, that would have been involved. So I, I, I just appreciate it.
Yeah, it does make it easier for everybody. Okay, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all same sign? Okay, it has passed. And next one here is an ordinance, elimination of distance requirements for alcohol sales within the town center, just Councilman Wright.
Yeah, Mayor, this is really just a compliance ordinance, now that we've changed the zoning regulations up there, it, it requires a little changes to, to some of the um regulations regarding the alcohol sales and, and distances from, from churches and schools and things like that. So a- as I understand it, and City Attorney can, can elaborate if she thinks it's necessary, this is just to change some of the language in our existing ordinance to make it any compliant with the zoning uh that we just adopted.
Um, I would comment that um Shannon and I talked about this, there are no distance requirements for certain licensed establishments that serve beer wine and spirits. If there's own T C with relation to schools and churches, it is important to note that bars and nightclubs are not allowed in the Town Center District. Any place that is licensed to sell beer, beer wine and or spirits uh will be a restaurant serving fee. So just that is kind of a point and we did have discussion about that on P N Z. Um, one of our P N Z members actually um goes to Baptist church and um that was satisfactory as well when we discussed it. But that's just a point that we're not looking in our town center to have bars and nightclubs, it will be full-service restaurants.
Right, and, and the majority of the sales would come from food and not alcohol.
Right.
Um, and really what this does is it just changes the existing language. Uh, as the ordinance currently reads in uh municipal code, it now says no distance requirements shall apply to any establishment within these provisions if such licensed premises is located within the city designated downtown. So we're changing those words to within the towns, within the city's Town Center Mixed Use Development Zone District. So it's just a change of those words. And we are omitting uh the second part of the sentence in the current municipal code, which says um, the area is registered with the State Secretary of State's Office, that is not a process that's followed anymore at this time. In two thousand and six, when the D E A at the time was looking at creating a town center, that was the process. That is no longer the process, the Secretary of State's Office is not involved in the pilot of designated downtown districts. So we do not need that in the ordinance because it does not exist anymore.
Okay. Mayor, can I have a motion at this time?
I move we adopt uh this ordinance change as it is written.
Second. Motion and a second, anybody have any further discussion? This, this is well done, uh, Shannon, I appreciate it very much. Really did well. I know you use the attorney to help you.
A lot, yes.
She's the guy, she's the guiding light for all of us. What I meant to say was you tell.
No. No, Shannon, it was, it was definitely a team, I thought we, we uh, we did a lot of reading and rereading, so, but.
Sure, councilman, I mean, crazy dude. Mr. Brumfield was part of it too.
Well, the, um, the thing is how the framework is in place, but the park is the least banned um for, for town center development.
Okay, now. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And this one has passed as also, thank you very much. Now we're down to comments from the council. Close one.
I'm gonna stay, I just am very excited about the council.
Um, I'm going to say I just am very excited about the town center. Um, something that I've been, you know, here a little bit out here and there for, for years was up here on the council and I'm excited to be part of making it actually happen. So, um, thank you to all of you who worked hard to get this, to get it this far and uh we'll take it farther and actually uh put it into practice and, and support it since it's a very good.
Alright, thank you, sir. Those two, please.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just take a second and uh commend our, our department heads, our staff for, for being able to, to continue to persevere with some of these long projects. The budget is a long process. Uh, this project here to do the overlay map and all of that, that's been a months-long project. Uh, if I've learned one thing doing, doing this local government thing is that there's no such thing as a short project. Everything seems to have more steps and more layers uh than you think that it should. And as somebody who's admittedly easily distracted and likes to move on to the next thing, you guys do a great job of making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and that everything is, is done appropriately and in compliance and in the timely fashion. So, I just want to commend all of the guys for doing an excellent, excellent job. Take it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. Please pass that on to, to the ladies and the gentlemen. Appreciate that. Also, looking forward to the Independence Day celebration coming up.
Yeah. It's just getting close, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Is that it? Thank you. I have one, uh, open a news here, which is good. North Municipal Association notified us today. Actually, today, June sixteenth, something that's been secret today. Our City of Ethics recertification. Uh, we have been granted, we have, you know, we recognize that we've recertified at the City of Ethics. So, that was something that was done a few years ago and Councilman Wright was here, was part of us. We appreciate all those memories on that night, but it's a great thing for us. And I might mention on a personal basis, I, I had to do yamoni shoppings out. I understand if you haven't had a yamoni shop the last year and a half, you can get one. Covers twenty different ones instead of twelve I do on the day. Best community service. Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Beetle.